Oh, yes, because it was absolutely just.
And I worked on that one together, so. Those are. Right, but I mean, but the way.
Oh, that's good.
I was wearing a red shirt sweater this morning, didn't even realize it was Valentine's Day. And I was wondering why everybody. Not so I was wearing red. And like, how can I wear? Now I know. So the new CEO. Oh, yes. And he's gonna have. And it's interesting. Half of what you're thinking. It's not like you're.
Well.
You know that. They're having my psychology, bringing money. Ecology. Expand your. You're expanding. But I think it's kind of. It's not.
Yeah.
Not who doesn't version soon.
Business tag.
Yeah, yeah. Well, he didn't come through center.
Here we go.
Yes, I probably will someone.
Okay, audio comics. I'll tell you about this camera. Start getting out. Frigging. Um, again, as in. We weren't able to set up. It was just. None, it's called Sony. Well, everybody.
So many things.
Let me just try to. It's just. And. I don't know.
You know, you don't. You can talk. Much. You're. Now she's. She's.
Sorry. Is. Very.
I get it. You're calling me all alone. Right.
Very.
You know, maybe they're.
Oh, yeah. All this. Was, uh, you said he was going to be here. So. Yeah, it's always busy. But then you were really. That's. Down there. Like, okay, so. Put that lead into. Say your part about going.
Well. Probably.
Well, you're spoken, you're not. He is like.
Yeah.
Or you're doing.
Yeah.
Let me just get.
Well, we. Well. No one made her just drop it.
Uh, am I coming through? Coming through?
I'm not gonna mention.
Nick, can you hear me coming through? That's coming through clear.
Uh, we have some more of them coming for our. Yeah, uh, I think. Oh, yes, yes. Yes, yeah, it would be wonderful. You know. Yeah. We've been at the. So.
That's. Um, I don't know. What did you? There's so much. But yeah, well, it's. Having me. Sure, and I can understand. You ready to see her photo? Oh, yeah. Even if they were. Oh. Yeah. She's. Elevation path. Dragging out.
Yeah. I mean.
I'm lost.
I hope.
No. You know, they write that. Right. The whole world's. Same occasion. I sat here. I didn't watch the. So. My. You're right. Um, no, but I watched the movie like. It is. What else we can. Yeah, I got, I watched. My voice. And everyone. You love. Great. Oh, yeah. I personally like. When she has the job. I refuse. I just like so. So, so dumb. It's so dumb. Oh. I refuse. If I talked. But I talked about, yeah. I think. Yeah. I think it's. Mentioned it. A lot. She's. I'm getting. You tell us. I will go. So it will be structured days on Thursday. For clinic days or. Then we'll beginners. So now you're, now you're. I know. And I brought them to just. The. Yes. Then you could. It kind of does. So right there. They can talk for three hours as appreciation gets really hot. Was over there. Oh, yeah. So hot. I just finished my hot sauce. Still hot. Um, well, I cannot find it. Yeah. How many years? Everyone. I love.
Yeah. It's like words. No, it just seems like range, like two. I think it's so much. Nearly.
Here. On that yellow one. Hey, wasn't we? Put it on this one. With this guy in the middle of this. Like, move this guy out. No, that's. What's this? Yeah. We got it. And. My computer is always dead. Literally, I never have. I can never. I'm gonna get some meetings. Like, no modern everything. Yeah. Being. I don't know. There you go. All right. Eighteen minutes. Good writing. Going off. I'll say I'm like. Yes, good. Thank you. So. Well, we just. You're a teacher. I just had this. Now. You know, I was getting a. Yes, thank you. I would kind of, I would tell you a little bit. Extend back to. Four spots. Yeah. And she's. He's like, I see. I know. And there's one more spot. And you. She dropped me off. She drove by. You're not going down that way? Oh. Just. What do you tell? Let's see. I'm actually with twelve. Really more. Not. Twelve. Yeah. That, you know, I thought about. Okay. Secretary. Well, waiting for you next. I'm just giving everybody their last minutes to mention bathroom. Do whatever they want. We will start on nine. I only have. Yeah. So. Put off the guy. They were first when I thought. Oh, I think my street. Um, a lot of people. Yeah, yeah. Yeah, it's much. Very. Let go. Tomorrow. Ready. Can do. Anyway, I'm sure I can run out and that's. Well, I've been.
Before we start. Everybody just being really careful without cords up here. Um, they're very easy to trip over. And if you are presenting, we do have a kicker with a powerpoint, but it's running in battery nine. So this laptop right here, your right hand side. Uh, has the powerpoints ready to go. You have to load them. So. Use the arrow keys.
Right, we'll get started in a minute. Are you kidding?
Sure.
Cool.
We're.
Can I ask you to? Which is phones on vibrate or mute or something? Maybe you're not going off. Yeah.
So we're not jumping right here.
No, me, Patrick. All right, it's one o'clock. Welcome, everyone, and we are ready to start this meeting. We have four councilor present and we will start it. So, um, I'm Barb. Oh, we have a fifth one. Okay. Uh, Barb Nosewaby, mayor, and welcome to the February fourteenth. City Council Retreat Day. This is one of two days. And we will start by going to my left and introducing yourself so that people listening can hear your voice. Jessica Buehl, city councillor.
Melissa Yusak, city councilor.
Was the manageable city manager.
Devengement budget and strategic planning officer.
Olivier Vosman, city councilor.
Cynthia Tnee, finance director.
Ernie Iker, parks and recreation director.
Jared, the assistant finance director.
Sarah Hill, transportation director.
Kim Baxter, Durango city councillor.
Thank you. Um, Olivier, before you arrived, I asked everyone to mute their phones. So you'll make certain that your phone is muted. I'd appreciate it. Thank you. Okay. Welcome. Okay, I know we have Patrick here, but I wanted to say that this is our, if I'm remembering correctly, our third kind of retreat. Uh, we started with the previous council, worked on our first strategic plan. Last year, we worked on, uh, uh, again, the strategic planning process and the intent today. And I will have you also clarify more, but it's to really prioritize. Uh, what we want for confidence going forward and the funding around it. So, but I'd like to turn it over to you for your opening comments, and then we'll start in with Patrick.
Absolutely. Uh, thank you very much, mayor and council. Uh, as we had discussed, we'll do a little bit different than what our normal standard of training was, where we would talk about the strategic plan and go over the strategic plan. I think there was a level already with the goals established and the objectives that were instituted. And so what we were looking for on this one specifically was really talking about the priorities that we kind of continuously talk about throughout the year. Uh, in regards to here's some of the big picture priorities. You've talked with myself, you've also talked with Patrick, uh, in regards to kind of what those priorities were that you're discussing. So the first day will really be talking about those priorities, those areas, uh, and getting a walk away from this first day of here's how we see these priorities in ranked order. Tomorrow, we'll come back and actually talk more specifically about funding and how we can make these funding decisions, uh, funding decisions work. So I did want to stress that we heard you. Uh, one of the big things that came out loud and clear from those discussions were wanting to have progress and things done, something meaningful, valuable that would become out of this retreat we have. So we're looking at having a meaningful outcome today. I have Patrick over that, a meaningful outcome comes tomorrow, uh, that'll allow us to set up some of the work for staff to continue to work on, uh, for the rest of the, uh, for the rest of the year as we go through and integrate into, uh, our budget decisions for twenty twenty four. So with that, I will hand it over to Patrick, who will be our facilitator. We'll go over the two day session a little bit more and then some work into items. But the real goal is to get into the discussions, uh, and really get into the priorities for today.
Thanks for that. Good afternoon, everyone. I'm delighted to be back here in Durango, Colorado.
Thank you.
Yes. I'd like to be here. And so as I said, you know, this is my third year working for all of you. So my role is your fitness trainer. So only you wore your sneakers today because you're going to the gym today and tomorrow. And my role is to try to keep you on that equipment that will give you build up your tone and capacity to drive change. And sometimes our fitness trainers can encourage us, push us, and that's part of my role today. So and tomorrow. And that's what I've been asked to do is try to help you thread that needle. In some respects, it's less about, uh, more discussion and more about the action. You've all worked together now for a few years. These items, none of these items are a surprise to you. You discuss them. At some point, you have to shift the idea. That's really the opportunity for today and tomorrow is to try to figure out how to shift that idea and thread the needle, if you will. There's really two types of communities in this country. There are those that look at their wallet and figure out their dreams, and those that have their dreams and figure out how to pay for them. What kind do you want to be? Of course, this is grounded in the practical side of financing. And that's what we're going to cover tomorrow. Today is more of a focus on what are these priorities? There's no lack of competition for priorities. What's essential? Some you have an obligation to taxpayers, but some are more option. And when you look at communities heritage, you inherit the discussion from your predecessors. It's the future of Durango, certainly an extrapolation of the past. The last thing in this community is static. It's highly dynamic. So what got you here won't get you there. So as you think about the process and mindset of today and tomorrow, imagine the future. So I ask this question, and sometimes this kind of goes right to the heart of the conversation. What year is it in this community? What's the corraling mindset? Is it hard to solve today's issue with yesterday's solutions? And just in a kind of a tongue in cheek way, it's like, we all know people live in a world that no longer exists. These are the right round, the VCR of the past, producing try to buy more of this video. Are people who think no great news has been released since they graduated from high school? Go ahead and say that's true. Right, so that's true. But when you think about local government, Durango in particular, it's tough to stay relevant. Community builder. Everybody in this room is a community builder. So when you think about the decisions you're making, it's challenging because there's some level of risk in there. Government is an industry pretends to be low risk. But it's about capital investors, thoughtful risk, prudent risk taking. And that's really what the basis is for today and tomorrow. You're on the other side of some of the subjects. So hopefully you get comfortable with making those decisions. There's not just one way to do this. You put together a process to help you figure some of that out. So it's a little bit different, so indulgent on this. There are six items in the back of the room, and they're listed on your agenda as well. By the way, the agenda, uh, timeframes are our guardrails. We do intend to be finished by four thirty today. This is not a quote unquote council meeting where people are going to talk and talk and talk. We're going to go with ground rules here in a minute. This isn't about trying to not make it sprint, but it's not a marathon. Try to find some balance. So the items in the back are the six key priorities, if you will, that you identified with A, you identified with B. And it'd be easy at a casual glance to say they're all important. That kind of undercuts the notion of prioritization. So you're actually going to use piloting notes in order to identify which you believe are most important. And we'll explain to that. We're actually going to do that twice today. You're going to do it purely in your own sense, and then you're going to hear presentations from staff on all those items. They're going to ask you to vote again. That way, by the time we wrap up this afternoon, we'll have a sense of which of these six have the most support, have the most attention. Government can do just about anything, but it can't do everything. There are capacity limits, there are capability limits that you have. Let's talk about the ground rules. So you have two materials in front of you. You have this item, this handy. Also have the PowerPoint that you're going to be using for some rapid thinking here to study agenda. It's important, if you recall, some of you are on council when the vision and mission were adopted. You better remember those sites. I think we did that very briefly, COVID, right? We put those. So it was really interesting times to do it. Remember, a vision is a destination you never achieve, a mission's not to get there. So a vision is like plumbing, uh, poetry and the mission is the plumbing. So we'll go back to that vision periodically after the next few days. But we thought it would be helpful, uh, to talk about the ground rules association. And that's on page two of this handout. So if you would go to those, I'm just kidding, he goes to those people, maybe like at home. Everybody in this room, mayor, council, or councilor in particular, are very passionate about Durango. We love that passion. We know you didn't sign up to get elected for the great hours of the great pay. And the infrequency of bone cost. It's, it's a big sacrifice by you and your family. So you bring all that passion into this ecosystem of decision making and discussions. Your colleagues, your passion about what you're doing and how you're doing it. And so it's important to remember in those conversations, there are good ground rules just to maintain those relationships, right? And how you do that. I, I share this with council, I do this from, from a position of love and affection and respect. Stress reveals character. Be mindful of that, you're in the spotlight, about how you navigate those conversations. How many of you have children in the room? How many of you have children? How many of you agree that our kids pick up their bad habits from our spouses? Do you agree with that statement? Gonna have to break your operation. Isn't it weird to see your kids, how does it pick up from you? You didn't know their watch? Could be me, that'd be my life, right? I'm being a little silly just to make a point that this spotlight can be smothered. There's people that queue on here. Play it quietly. So here are the ground rules. They read this a lot for those at home. It's important to remember that all participants are not expected to agree with every word, statement, or sentence in the work products or documents the group discusses or prepares. Each participant should look at the work as a whole, not one part in isolation. And these ground rules will be helpful in your discussions. One, be courteous and listen while others are speaking. Some people listen to reply. I encourage you to listen to understand. Two, keep remarks succinct as a guideline. Keep your remarks if you meant, if you would. It's one to three minutes per speaker. Time is of the essence. Now, we're trying to go beyond our system here. And it's not like we're going to start the watch and then stop the watches. Ask you to exercise some self-awareness in that moment. If you think you're talking too long, you probably are. And my role is to try to keep that conversation moving. So if I say, can you wrap that up? Please know that I'm coming from a place of trying to keep the conversation. Three, add new comments only, do not repeat what others have said. Sometimes it's difficult because you're trying to make a point. Sometimes it's just good to say that I agree and here's your point. Maybe punch it out. The other side. Four, address the group leader or facilitator rather than other participants. So a lot of this conversation is to me or through me and to your colleagues. Four, address the group leader or facilitator rather than other participants. So a lot of this conversation is to me or through me and to your colleagues. Five, try to keep an open mind. And listen to others of differing opinions is often where the greatest opportunity for increased understanding exists. I would offer you, the diversity of your thoughts is the source of strength for you, as we already bought. It's in a wonderful, not everybody thinks the same way. It's in also sometimes frustrating, not everybody thinks the same way as you. So I would say the diversity of your thought process, both the what and the how, is a source of strength. Number six, be positive. Try to offer constructive suggestions,批评 criticism, someone's other, someone's opinion about a subject. I would often build on that. To keep in mind that simply asking a question is not meant to be criticism. It's offering a point of view. It's asking a question. Sometimes we personalize when people ask a question because we're asking about our point. When we personalize that point, it kind of skews our perspective. Then we become defensive. So if somebody asks a question, let's hopefully it's relayed in a way that you're questioning, asking the question of the point, not so much of the person. And people personalize it. It's hard to step back from that. Seven, look for common ground. Politics, if you are to compromise, the art of influence. It's hard to be influential if you're not willing to compromise. So do not seek simply to reinforce your own position, especially at the expense of another participant. Important to remember. And eight, if you've spoken once during a specific round of discussion, allow others to speak before you make a further conversation. Now, I don't call on people. The fact is that I think it makes, can make people vote comfortable. So you're going to be able to talk. I'm not going to simply call you, call on you and say, what do you think? But I know, just from my past experience working with this council and others, people want to know where you're coming from on the science. Sharing your point of view, not just for your colleagues and staff, but also obviously for people that are watching at home. They sometimes want to understand the rationale behind why you're making a certain point. And that's entirely up to the five of you about how much you want to share. But we're not, there's not sort of a perfect gauge that we're evaluating everybody through. So I hope that you acknowledge these ground rules, you adopt them. We're trying to do this in a supportive way, in an encouraging way, in a respectful way, in a good reminding way here at the onset of the conversation. Did I miss anything there about the process? So I'm going to direct your attention to this handout here just for a moment. On page two. You're going to participate in, I haven't been here just a moment. You're going to do the voting process, then we're going to come back. There's going to be presentations. There'll be a vote again. We're going to take a minute.
Prioritize.
All right.
Prioritize.
Priorities, sorry. City attorney, my heaven. So prioritization. We're going to take a quick dialogue break at some point this afternoon. People need to do that. And before we get started, let me just direct your attention back to the first page. I'm sorry, I'm going to ask sequence here. The visions. Keep this in mind during your discussion. I'm going to read it aloud so people at home can, and if they don't recall what it is. Durango is an authentic, that word, authentic, genuine. It's real, right? It's not fabricated, the opposite of authenticity. Diverse, not just socio-economically and ethnically, but diverse in people's points of view, their habits, their appetites. Multigenerational, which we have represented even in this room. People from different walks of life. We're all a product of the year in which we grew up. So multigenerational, it's definitely a blending all that together. And thriving community. So thriving is something you aspire to. It's sort of a dynamic. Thriving, not just economically, but also just the vibe of the community. That's the first thing. Our residents value and enjoy our unique natural environment. Obviously, that's a huge part of living here, is your natural environment. It's a draw. It's a magnet. People value charity. And benefit from the management of our city's resources. Lots of resources the city is responsible providing. Both programs, services, operations, facilities, no shortage of resources the city is providing as a quality of life advocate. And physically responsible, you're steward of public resources, so you're trying to improve about how you optimize the tax value. Environmental, which is being aware that you're part of a larger environment, both ecologically, environmentally, and environment can mean so many different things to so many people, but you're not in isolation. And socially sustainable air. Not socially sustainable, it's an odd mixture of words. We're definitely hearing more and more about sustainability. Sort of started with the ecological movement. More and more communities around the country, unfortunate clients all over, they're sort of using sustainability in many different ways. Both whether it's financially sustainable, whether it's ecologically sustainable, whether it's socially sustainable. Words tend to enter our jargon and then sort of massage them to expand their meaning. But just think about what that encompasses, that vision. And remember, a shared vision is not the same thing as a vision shared. And you're aspiring to it. It brings out the best in everyone in here and members of this community. People volunteer to be here. Staff volunteers to work here. Council volunteers to serve here. Businesses volunteer to invest here. So people are here by choice. In today's session and tomorrow, it's really to capitalize on your strengths, which you have many. You want to continually be successful by choice, not by chance. And making decisions is part of that process, or that apparatus to continually be successful in that endeavor. So why do you thought we would make this work? Each of you, the councilors, have posted notes. Right? You have posted notes in front of you? Do you have yours?
I have one. I can cut it.
We've got one. Oh, you got it. Okay.
I have a little question.
Sure.
I have two questions. Last retreat, we discussed the vision and we reassessed the value of this vision. And I obviously, naturally, remember, I brought up concerns about our current vision. Is that part of this discussion, or are we just assuming the vision is the same?
Assuming the vision is the same, yeah. So the discussion and debate and deliberation about the vision is probably not part of the sense of for today and tomorrow. Today is really about activating the vision through the decisions that you're going to make. We're not really struggling in today, or that's not really part of the.
No. And then the prioritization, you're going to jump into the priorities during our call, and mentions beside housing, obviously. And finances and the vision as a master plan for our community. And they're not part of this. I'm just wondering, is there, they're not to make the cut?
Well, I think in that sense, it's more of conceptual. It's not, I would offer to you as a perspective, and I'm sure Jose can offer a perspective as well. I think, and I remember when I talked about that both this year and last year. I think the way you're framing that is not so much a priority, but it's more of a philosophy about how the organization's functioning. About its physical sustainability and the master plan. Because what I gather from conversations I've had with you, master plan is a lot more than land use. And it's really about how the organization is functioning and how it's financing itself, the services it's delivering. That's a more global aspect about your understanding about the role of Durango as an organization and how it's operating. I don't see that as sort of a separate priority as undertaking, as endeavor. I don't know. I'm trying to characterize that from our conversations.
Well, I think the finances is important.
Right.
That's an ongoing thing.
Right, of course.
So it's a separate, and then a vision slash master plan, because I have to distinguish it from the vision that we showed up there.
Right.
I think that is a very important part of the retreats and the strategic plan of how our community grows.
Well, I remember today's. Yeah, and I would offer you that today and tomorrow is not the conventional retreats that we had in the past to really reexamine the strategic plan. This is trying to identify priorities from the existing strategic plan, and this was the priorities in the near-term, short-term. So it's a little bit of a different recall than sort of setting back like we've done in the past and examining, given an X-ray of the strategic plan and all of its components. So this is trying to move some of those elements out and identify, prioritize, and execute, not to go back to the the concepts or the strategic, the key result areas themselves. I don't know, Jose, if you want to.
Could I jump in also? I'll remind council that last year in February at our retreat, we called for developing that, how are we going to pay for everything? The sense of, and that was one of the project, things that we were supposed to be working on this year. And so as a result, in part, that is the outcome from today, is prioritizing the big picture items, and then what are the potential funding sources? So that is an outcome from last year's retreat, which was again, February. Thank you.
So each of you have posted note pads. You have one there. Everybody has one. So the process, there's no perfect way to do this, is to the back, to the back. Remember, you're going to do this twice. You're going to do it based on your own sense of knowledge and what you think is a strong priority right now. You get four different posts, you get four posted notes to put up. So you can't, you don't get six, and you put one on each of them. You only get four. And the ground rules are, you can't put more than one of your posted notes on any item. So you can't take four of them, put them on one of the items, and it kind of deplains the score. So we're asking you to be thoughtful about this. And not overload the score, the processing, the prioritization process. There's no perfect way. There's points, we talked about this. There's points, there's colors, there's buttons, purple. Alter the different ways. The outcome of all this is try to get a sense of, of these six as council, which are receiving the most support as a top priority. So again, the ground rules are, you get four posted notes. So you might want to just tear four sheets off so you're not tempted. You go to the back of the room. And take the time that you need. You can block ten or fifteen minutes. I know this is difficult. This is one aspect that's difficult. By not being influenced by other people, unless they put something up. I'm not naive. We are persuaded by other people. What they see is important. That's cool. And you can have conversations about this and talking about that.
And Patrick, what do you want us to put on?
You just put the post-it note on that page in the back.
No, 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 right. No name.
You don't need to do any of that.
We know what all the orders you are.
Okay.
They're all colored code, dude. Remember, you're going to do this twice. That's kind of a different process. And so Jose, Devin, and Aaron talked about, and we talked about this. Well, this would give us a sense before you even hear the presentation by staff, where is the council? And then give you another by the apple afterwards, if you want to change what you believe is the most important priorities of the six, which are the top four. You know, you may end up where you started. That's okay. Gives you a chance to sort of not feel bound by your initial vote until you hear the post-staff, initial prioritization to your post-staff, okay? So I'm going to ask you to step up and go to the back under these. It's like Jeffrey using something.
For the prices, right, or something.
That's right. That's a good one. What you believe are the top four.
We had the materials.
You said four.
That made it easy.
So everybody on council voted for our selected uses top priorities, I believe. And then street, street, bridges, alley improvements receive three, and transit receive three. All right, so those are sort of the second tier. And then the third tier, again, they all have merit, but this prioritization, parks and recreation, the storm margins receive three. Well, thank you for that. Thank you for indulging us in the process. Short and sweet, right? Give us an indication, that's good. That will introduce transition to the staff presentations. Yes, right? And first up, so first will be on Eva and Scott, who are doing housing.
Do we still need to go?
It could always be a second half comeback. No pressure. There's only one way to go.
So we were, Aaron, this was a couple of great conversations with Devin, thinking about how we really get means and beds around the issue and what we can really accomplish, what that translates to as far as a needed number. You're talking about the format of the retreat, and we're going to focus on funding and possible funding sources and giving the outcomes that you and the community want to see. And we were talking through that. It's a nice chart. Started to develop in her mind about how to use our lived-out experience over the past eleven, twelve years with our production. Eva's done some great research recently. So over the past eleven, twelve years, what are the average number of residential units that are produced in our community? So under current conditions, what has been produced? And you can see, we had a word to tell right up, I think this was in your cockpit about the methodology. But you can see that over the last twelve years, it's about a hundred and forty-eight residential units total. Or, sorry, on average, a year. And then we looked out and we say, okay, over the next, let's take twenty-fourty as a target year, over the next twenty-two years, we estimate that without any intervention, without any touch on things, we're over three thousand two hundred and sixty-six new units, market rate you want to produce. If we're able to get fourteen percent, I've given you a range of options, if we're able to get fourteen percent of those new units to be affordable, attainable, workforce-directed, that's going to give us four hundred and eighty-six affordable, attainable, below market. Let's use that. That's what we want, the low market. When you add that to our existing stock of the low-market units, we get to one thousand fifty-three. One thousand units was identified in two thousand and twenty-eighteen as a target. I'm not saying this is a perfect target. I'm saying it's the only thing, and that's just a starting piece. We wanted to get our heads around these numbers and follow through. So in the next twenty-two years, if we get fourteen percent of the market rate units that are produced to be below market, we'll hit that one thousand unit goal. So we talked about, how can we then give you a spectrum of how we can sort of tweak that existing trajectory, that system, and how can we leverage what is being produced by the private sector and get some of those units to be below market? How long will that take us? And how much will that cost us? So that's what this table summarized it. And I'm going to pick one and kind of track through with you and ensure we're communicating as we're not giving. So if we're able to, we're able to bump up annual housing production through more efficient processes, through just getting the message out, through opening up land or the postal. And doing that, we bump up the average to two hundred units per year. So we're at one more gate, we take some sort of, I call them soft measures, to increase that to two hundred units per year. And if we can get fifteen percent of those units to be below market, that's going to give us thirty units each. Okay, following me so far, just as far as I was trying to figure it out. Thirty units each. Now, we also have some lived-out experience on how much it costs us to contribute to make those units below market. We have the in-receiving work overlap project. We have the game rental project where we're getting restricted units. Eva's working on dozens of others to get those below our units. So we have multiplier, how much each unit will cost us. Two hundred thousand per ownership of a restricted unit, eighty thousand per rent. Okay?
Eighty thousand?
Yes. Cost to get that below market. We just took this thirty number, we said, look, do fifteen percent ownership, fifty percent rental. So fifteen is the ownership, fifteen is the rental, and we landed on four point two million dollars a year to accomplish that. There's so many assumptions, so many variables, so many ways to tweak that. But you can see, we just needed to start somewhere. We're giving you a range of options. We're also trying to factor in We're also trying to factor in, like I said, those soft adjustments that we're making to really streamline our review process. Encourage more just market residential development, along with having resources to contribute to this project. So that leads us, they give us thirteen years to, that gets us four hundred and new units total, more than our. I know, it's right at, it's four fifty six, right at the four fifty six number. You can see where we ended up with. We all ended up at the same number to reach our goal for the units, the bearing goals are just how long it takes us to get there and how much money we have each year to do that. Stop there. That all makes sense, you'll see when, you know, on the next two slides, you'll see where we landed, right around this four point two number a year. If we felt like that found us in a reasonable timeframe to that goal. So we'll flesh this out more, but I wanted you to see sort of the sausage making of how we do this, how we do the number that we're working. Does that help? Is that understandable?
Yeah, and I want to be clear, that's just funding to incentivize, that is not cover staffing time or things like that. It's only to incentivize and partner with the developer. Great sausage making. To start, we'll talk about the landscape, I'll talk about what we're trying to achieve. We kind of start that understanding, what we. How to understand, right, that's been part of my learning process. From units, those exist, what's the breakdown, what's that percentage? Did we provide infrastructure, did we provide land, things like that, right, as we continue to track and to talk about. How do we start to channel through development units, right, is that the outcome? What's the goal, how do we get the funding for it? So one of the key things that currently exist for funding housing are those three buckets we've talked about. You've got the fair share fee and we will. We've got the twin mutes transfer fee and an agreement, and we also have the three springs, transfer fee agreements. Now again, with fair share, we're trying to get creative, trying to be innovative, we're trying to figure out how to navigate with the private sector to develop public private partnerships. New, they're complex, the outcomes are good. Could they be greater, we had more, we developed our policy around how we contribute in the projects, right? So that there's an expectation, how we're delivering this, how we're negotiating, that produces templates. It produces that product that we can start to hopefully churn and produce more quicker, more efficient. Because we know what those funding sources don't look like, and how do we start to get those to enable outcomes that we want to deliver for this community? So we talked a little bit about what are those funding targets, or they're seven, reminding me. The dollar amount that we use for those, are they on one coverage, like the two hundred thousand or three hundred thousand?
Yes, we look back to the inception of our strategic system and looked at what we collected. One of the challenges here prior to Cynthia's arrival was the revenues and expenditures were being funded in and out of the revenue account. So it made it challenging just to pull a quick analysis, hey, let's take a peek and see. How much revenue we collected over the years because the expenditures and revenues were coming out of the same account. So with her arrival, that change occurred, and so it was quite a bit easier, obviously, to report for us to see really how much are these collections? And so when we were looking at those averages, I want to say fair share started in two thousand and fifteen was our first. First dollar figure, and so we looked at those averages out to the. We also looked at three springs and twin mutes. Three springs, obviously, there's complexities with that piece, at current state, it's getting to that kind of capacity level that twin mutes is not unless village two happens. So we kind of swapped those two to be, okay, historically, three springs was a higher, around a hundred and fifty thousand annual collections a year. To now that being really that twin mutes piece, so we looked back at what those dollar figures are, what those averages are. So everything is about four hundred and twenty five to four hundred and fifty annually, on an annual basis with those fees that we felt comfortable paying. They're difficult to forecast, just because of the nature of how they come to fruition, but that was our process in looking at that. And you'll see here for the revenue forecast for twenty twenty four, councils aware those ARPA funds were dedicated to housing, and so that's really what that bigger piece is there that's. Probably not the housing fund for that twenty twenty. Should council choose to utilize those ARPA funds because they expire at the end of twenty four, so. That, kind of that background and that piece as we were looking at what those dollar figures are, how much have we collected, how much do we think we'll continue to collect, and then what were those dollars used for? Historically, the fair share has been utilized for homes fund, and so that was the other piece, is looking to see where those dollars went to. And then that three hundred and fifty thousand, three hundred and five thousand for animus mobile home project, which was two homes fund, two distributed. So we did a lot of analysis looking at these, so that, as Eva mentioned, we kind of need to know. Where we're starting with and how much we can rely on for the housing piece, and those dollars, my understanding cannot be utilized for status. Any questions, Ryan?
I can ask some questions, but I'll let you finish the second question.
So, I don't know if you want to carry on with any of the narrative there, or have you covered it?
So. The goal here, I believe, was to demonstrate and illustrate if we had, remind you, like, we had. Infinite pool of money.
So it was looking to say anything that staff could accomplish in a given year in the strategic plan, and so that's how each. Department and each division looked at these areas, was if there were funding within a challenge, what could be accomplished? And so that's really the opportunity that we looked at through this. We did provide some potential funding options as well, and then if we look at kind of that second slide, this is where. This UK can consider as what's dealing with that baked into their expenditure, but also has faculty expenditures there itself. So with the current revenues, if it's just fair share, twin mutes, three springs, you can see that in twenty twenty four. We just start to dip into a negative unbalanced position, and then that obviously compounds up itself, and the expenditures were to be about four point two million everywhere. Are you going to ask questions, Councilor Austin?
Yeah, so I go first, I. So first, I appreciate the sausage making, I think that's very understandable, not sure if I completely agree with it, but I think we have to start somewhere, so I think that was a good first step. So. If you go back one sheet. So we have the, I'm gonna break down the revenues, I'm gonna have questions on each one of those. So the fair share, well, first of all, the question, there was, I have asked quite a number of times for a very detailed breakdown of the revenues and the expenditures for the housing. And I think one of the things that you found was that the transfer fee would transfer into the general funds versus, is that correct, and that was correct?
So originally, prior to the Housing Innovation Fund, those dollars were placed into the general fund. However, they are, you probably picked it wrong, restricted, reserved, they're one of those categories where sign unbalanced. If they weren't utilized in the general fund?
Yes. They would be restricted.
Restricted, so they were restricted in general, and prior to the Housing Innovation Vision being created as part of the twenty twenty. No, two later.
Now we have that fund, and when we get those revenues now, it's.
And prior transfers, were they also put into that fund, or so we have? So we have a fee and new forecast of two hundred thousand dollars. And if I look at one specific project that comes to mind, which was Milton Preliminary Plan Development. Twenty three townhomes, and they opted to pay the fee and new. And that dollar amount is five hundred and eighty thousand dollars. And that is just one project for twenty three townhomes. So I have, help me understand how we can estimate two hundred thousand annually? If I have one project of twenty three units, that's already paying five hundred and eighty thousand dollars.
And a lot, I'll give a couple ways of that, that plays out, first is it's an average for.
So yeah, then they started at twenty fifteen, and though we looked at twenty fifteen forward.
The other aspect is those entities are not paid always in one of some, at the bottom end of the project, that's how we accommodate and develop our finances. We allow them to be paid either on CO or in installments in two or three, so that it can be spaced out over the years. A project like that, even a twenty three townhomes is probably going to help for eighteen months, like months.
Okay, well. To clarify real quick too, so like you said in your presentation, three springs isn't building that much, and so they might not have anything in twenty twenty four, and Milton Townhomes would. And so like you said in your presentation, this is an average.
It is an average, and to your question, Councilor Austin, we have been working on, so we're able to show you exactly what we've asked for, and we can provide that to you. Like I mentioned, it was a little covered, because fortunately, we've been setting the recipe to begin and end one round. It was a little tricky to, to create reports of all the information, but we can provide that to you.
Oh, first clarify something that Councilor Bill said, the twin mutes and three springs don't pay fair share fees because they have the transfer process. So that's what I meant, the, we have about two thousand units in different stages from design and development. And even if we. Construct out of that, hundred and fifty units, yeah? And if I would assume the fact that the unit cost for a new is based on a budget. Five hundred and eighty thousand dollars for twenty three units is twenty five thousand dollars per unit. And if we build a large project, hundred and fifty units a year, that would bring us as a community, hundred and fifty times twenty five thousand dollars is three hundred, three point seven five million dollars in revenue annually. Either pays for, and I'm gonna use a term here, because I think we missed that in this. If a developer actually builds the units, there should be a dollar equivalent for revenues because they actually build the unit. So you could say that is worth, in my case, two hundred thousand dollars per unit built, if you don't collect a fair share of. So do you understand my thought process here, because this forecasted revenue does not include the revenue that we could have collected by the actual build, the builder built the below market units. So there's a dollar value to everything that we have, but we don't realize, but we do add the units, so there's an equivalent to revenue.
Remember, when staff's doing some of these projections, it's also based on some estimates, especially in this field where they're not really sure, so. I think the theme about this, and I'm not trying to speak for staff, but what I hear is. Some of this is based on historical data, and it's based on projections around averages, so there's always things that you can pull out and say, what if they did this, what if they did that? This is sort of a snapshot, if I'm correct, about what the forecast is, and that's based on past modeling and some projections. So we're trying to make sure that we don't spend an inordinate amount of time, if we might, on certain mechanics of each of these items and how they're funded. This is sort of the thing, and it's good to ask questions if you don't understand it, but we're not, we're trying to avoid the, sort of the items and then pulling things in and pulling things out and kind of reaching the figure of the recipe. Right, you're doing more of a rock rush presentation, so you all understand sort of the dynamics and the parameters and the dollars and cents, we're not trying to do the reconcile over dollars.
No, I'm, I'm. I'm just gonna make my point, you're okay.
One, one point, there we go, move on.
Yeah, I'd like to go on it.
The point I'm making, and this is just a fair share, because for the transfer piece, I have the same comment, similar comment, right, it is not a ten percent difference, it is a factor ten difference. So when we speak of funding requirements, I think to have a educated discussion about it, you should have realistic numbers. And I just pointed out that the revenues for the fair share, the new, and based on one project alone, are significantly higher, and if you apply the same. So I already pointed out, I'm not sure if everybody grasped that, but.
We grasped, we just don't agree. We just don't agree.
Just because someone doesn't agree with you doesn't mean we're stupid, thank you.
So I think part of it is, going back to the assumptions, going back to the assumptions. It's, in some of these, I'm gonna repeat myself here, these are estimates based on financial forecasting. And they don't know how the market's gonna trend, that's not really within their real house to be able to make that extrapolation. So if you pull one number out, is there, is it gonna, it challenges the assumptions, I think for all of these, there are some assumptions that staff is making. Because these are, some of these are driven by things that are happening not in this room, or even by staff, or by council, and that's sort of the nature of local government, you're subject to the market, especially this. And so pulling the number out and then how that impacts another number, we're trying to avoid that today. This isn't a budget discussion for a day, it's a priority setting process. And I'm just trying to avoid that, we're gonna get lost, and I'll start going down rabbit holes about dollars and cents, and then, you know, trying to reconcile those stuff. So I would ask you to indulge about that, it's great to ask questions, and it's good to scrub it a little bit, we're just trying to have some balance between that scrubbing. That we're trying to avoid turning this into a budget discussion, and picking apart the methodology, because the methodology is what it is. You want to have a conversation offline, a Jose about the methodology, that's great, but we're not trying to reach and figure the methodology right here, right now.
Thank you, Melissa had a point she wanted to make.
Yeah, just comment, I understand the methodology, which is averaging since over the last review, and in forecasting long-term revenues, I actually appreciate that, that's how I would do my own personal budget. So it makes sense, and also, I appreciate the way you've laid it down here with revenues and expenditures and showing this fund balance and bringing it on board. To me, this is a really good picture, I haven't seen it before, and I like it as it gets to the funding level priorities and looking at what it might potentially cost. We need to start somewhere, and we all have listed this as a priority, I think it's a great, I really appreciate the analysis, and I appreciate the methodology.
And Councilor Baxter.
Yeah, I just wanted to comment that when I first got on council, there was a forecast made that fair share fees were going to be a million dollars based upon the units that were projected to be built. That didn't. That's because not all the units that are in the pipeline end up getting built, and so I think that averaging is a really, really critical way to do it, because it takes into account what really happens. Not just what we wish would happen, so I really appreciate that also, to what Councilor Mayor Proten, you said, mentioned also, so this is great, thank you.
Yeah, I love that we have a number, like I feel like it's always been this like obscure, like, okay, we have this new division, and how much do we need, let's throw ARPA money at it because we have it, but like. If it's sustainable, like what number do we need to succeed? And I think that the options here, like, let's see how much money we do have, and we might not be able to meet your, you know. Four point two million dollars, but at least we have something to go off of, and I was in charge for years and years and years, and this is exactly how we would forecast things too. It's an average of what actually got done, built, bid, subcontract, you know, all the things as actual, not like what's in, like we hope, and so police credit, yes, thank you.
Well, and that's one of the things, you know, we could have looked at, knowing permit for issue. So when a project's approved, when it's issued, when they're going to see them, but we've always tried to give data to council and community, are not subject to the opportunities issued. Because that actually is increasing your landscape, your actual housing stock in your community, and then we're able to sort of look at units or percentage and start to analyze it even more down pipeline. For fair share, kind of what Scott was talking about, the way those agreements are often structured is. They're usually split in payments, right, to ease on the offset of that front loading expenditure cost. They also often pay a portion of that when the building permit is issued. So it's not when they execute the fair share agreement, it's not when the project is funded by some council, it's actually when they pull that building permit. It's actually when they pull that building permit. So to the point of if it's going to get built or not, has a factor. That it all. It also doesn't ensure that that same year when the building, they would have paid that lump sum of what we're needing. Because they need to sell some of their units, which is why all the projects were phased, so that they can ease some of that cost. Also, in the beginning about the fair share, rental development is not going to include in our fair share program. So those fees are only being collected on our homeownership products for more units than development. So there's some ebb and flow. Some years we've had more units developed, some years we've had less. And so to Devon's point, that's why we kind of looked at that ten-year forecasting of how many CEOs have been issued in our community to get to some number, to get to some way to start to demonstrate what could we do? And, and Scott and I also wanted to show if we had some changes, maybe a fair share or some other policy or some other funding sources, could we do more? And what did that look like if we did more? And again, try to analyze by units, by year, proportionate or unit number, either or, because we talked about either or. And so he really spent quite a bit of time on that in his conference and wanted to work through that, so that we could demonstrate.
I was just going to go ahead there.
I just wanted to give a, a shout out for a moment, because I don't want this to be missed, that Cynthia had to come in and change errors in, in our, kind of our accounting procedures. The fact that the revenues and the expenditures came out of the same account, I think you have to recognize, um, kind of historically what we were deal, how, uh, what we were dealing with. So I also want to give that shout out as well for cleaning that up. Thank you. Um, and what I'd like to also say is, you, you summed it up. You've given us a minimum amount of money that you think the four point two, right, that you think you could do, but with more money, you could do more faster. So I think that the, the analysis, I appreciate it. It's very helpful. Appreciate your thinking of what you could do with more, but you've given us kind of a minimum of what you would expect to see to accomplish the, the basic plan, which is your, your number is four point two, right, but you, four point two is your, kind of your baseline. With more money, if there's more fair share that comes through rentals, that's gravy. You can add it up and, and then we can hold you accountable for getting things done faster.
And keep in mind, this endeavor, this function in particular, is something that, uh, the city is still trying to figure out as well. And you're subject to the market forces. When you give somebody another presentation today, it's more definable. It's literally concrete, wear, tear, usage, age, hours. In certain aspects of what you do as policymakers, as much what you're dealing with definitive information, it's not so much extrapolation. Some of this is extrapolation and it's grounded in a methodology. I would ask your intelligence for the balance of the day to try to limit the questions about maybe what they're presenting and not, and not so much focus on their methodology about how they got here. Because then we're sort of looking in the rearview mirror about how they got here. Asking you to sort of defer to that. If you have questions about the methodology, I would ask you just to hold those, talk to Jose after the meeting. Great, you would, because, uh, there, there's some, especially this one, it's, it's forecasting and, you know, pulling a variable out. There's another variable that pops. Some of these other ones, it's much more definitive. The methodology, this is not engineering. Some of these other ones are engineering. And, and there's similar engineering, defined engineering, this is more calculated. But it's not, it's not random by the Jersey Foundation.
That's cool. That sounds great.
That's great. Next, I have ability.
Definitely, I'm ready.
Jared.
Very. Finding a record, I also hit the wherever facility. It'll be. Maybe more than a quarter. Uh, in any case, uh, what I have put together for you is that, and uh, just kind of a picture of what we are looking for in terms of facilities. Um, I appreciate that facilities have been identified as critical needs. I have heard the refrain, uh, most of my career with City of Rango, that getting facilities under a much more, um, expected and, uh, estimated annual value is important. So this is an attempt to try to put that together. So forecasted revenue, um, we pulled back from an average of the last five years, what we've been spending annually in our building division, right? So that's forty-nine eleven building division. So in some years, that was as high as about a million, uh, a couple of the, uh, twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen years. Um, it was more like six hundred and thirty thousand something. So that, this is kind of a rough estimate of what we're spending every year, uh, on maintenance. Uh, and I would tell you it isn't quite enough. So, uh, going into our forecasted expenditures, um, we are spending that year in and year out. Uh, and that is just maintaining the facility we have today at the level that we are, so, you know, managing. So the next bullet is the big one, obviously. If we were to replace those four key facilities that we have, uh, those are the police department, City Hall, River City Hall and Carnegie. And that's an aggregate value of just under fifty thousand square foot. Um, we have roughed out an estimate that that would be anywhere from thirty-seven, forty-one million dollars of capital. And we were finding that that would be about two point seven million dollars a year in debt service.
Rough estimate.
I'm not sure I put that in there. I was taking a shot, uh, we're still working with, uh, our architect when we're looking at the nine RFPs ability. We haven't got anything finalized on that side. So we're talking just about a ballpark number that we think they could accomplish it, that we can at least place in here. So I want to put a couple asterisks on that.
All, all of this, I don't, I don't put anything. So, uh, but that is covered just those four facilities, um, to be sure. Um, and there is a need. I, if you look on the, uh, county website, they have an an effective age of every building, and between those four buildings, the effective age averages nineteen eighty-six. And so, uh, that's just again, a consideration that, um, yeah, we, we use them, you know, some of us really love them, some aspects. But there is definitely a need potentially for a rebrand. Um, in addition to replacing or rehabilitating those four facilities, we would still have need in the next ten years. To invest another approximately two point two million dollars of capital into the service center and into the PD substation, right? Substation obviously needs a lot less than the service center, um, but there are needs. So just to rough out those two numbers in terms of what our new facilities could cost us at two point seven and at a ten-year timeframe, what our capital needs for those two other facilities would be, uh, we're looking at about two point nine million dollars of funding again. Again, that's on top of what we have with seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars per year that we are continuing. There is an assumption that that seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, we might be able to shave that if we had new facilities, uh, at least in the short term. But we would also need to stand up a way to perpetually move to those facilities.
I'm sure, so I'm going to jump to the next slide, is that right? Uh, so, did you, sorry, when we're talking about the facility forecast, um, one of those areas, um, you know, to the council consider to reauthorize the two thousand five debt service that is currently already used for, um, the library, four meter road for debt service. And so that first forecast is if that were to be reauthorized, um, you can see that there is adequate funding with a recession of twenty-three thousand, twenty-eight and twenty-nine thirty. However, um, there's certainly opportunities, other rates to, um, some of those road impact fee funds. So this was, uh, the first infection there, we're seeing that. And then that second action is looking at building maintenance fund. So there's that starting fund now to eight hundred and sixty-two thousand, so without a general fund appropriation, we're utilizing, um, the current building, uh, four nine eleven, and, um, they're not having the funding for the, um, building maintenance. Today, so, um, that would be nice to pair those two together.
So the seven hundred and fifty thousand average, that's building maintenance now, that's coming out of the general funds, we pay for out of the general fund.
Yes.
So sales tax, right?
Again, there, there is a concept, uh, that I did put on that slide to actually start, you know, departmental front, which would have come through and they trained. Again, it's, it's runway development, but, uh.
That's very interesting, actually, because it, um, it would incentivize the departments to have smaller footprints so that they didn't need as much space, right? Because then they wouldn't have to pay as much.
I think some of the cost recovery questions, if you'd have more cost recovery questions. Cost allocation, that's the term I meant.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's a question there, Brian.
Any questions about this? Very straightforward. Again, it's somewhat of an estimate. It's an investment. About facilities and need and processing. A lot of cities do have different types of internal service fund, whether it's for payment to IT services or try and generate revenue through different, it's kind of moving, it's, it's the same money, but it creates a different level of, uh, visibility for council as a funding mechanism, so it's not just drawing from certain, uh, other funds. Yeah.
So I know I can do the math, but I want to make sure that everybody knows this too. So if you're looking at thirty-seven to forty-one million dollars for capital and you're getting two point seven million a year, how long does the debt service have to be? Like, how long would the tax have to be? Twenty years.
And again, the reason why those other years are higher. Uh, and one of those actually, this city had a twenty. That is part of the red not like.
We have to go on to the next one, which is.
Thank you. Um, so part of the revenue, as you've already mentioned, has kind of alluded it that we have two thousand and five, twenty fifteen, some of the use tax, all of it, plus we also do a lot of maintenance and this general support out of general fund. Um, so what I focus on here is really just kind of looking at the existing two thousand and five, um, fund that we have, which is half of an asset. Um, and what we are currently bringing in right now is about two point eight million dollars a year. Um, in twenty-two and seven, if we reauthorize, we'd be bringing in about three million dollars. You extend that over to life, you're looking at about hundred ninety-seven million dollars to, um, to fund, um, various projects and formations of, of projects as well. Um, so right now, this, um, fund is, um, scheduled to expire in twenty twenty-six. Um, just kind of up until then, we do have, um, those funds identified on how they're used on. Um, we do quite a bit of maintenance, um, support out of this fund. Um, from higher mitigation and open space maintenance, uh, to supporting Ringo trails, uh, parks, trails and record improvements. So that funded towards since this year, um, replacing the playground up at, um, Hill Crest Park and, and some work over at, um, Pioneer Park. So those things are kind of scheduled out. And then we also do an inter-fund transfer. Um, twenty twenty-two is about four hundred and five thousand, twenty-three is about three hundred and seventy thousand dollars. So we do quite a bit of maintenance, um, about a million dollars in maintenance, um, from this fund right now. Um, they, we also do annually put aside some money for land acquisition. Right now, we're putting aside about four hundred thousand dollars a year. Um, and then beyond that, we, um, fund new capital projects. Um, through twenty twenty-six, this fund is scheduled to fund, uh, pickleball, um, installation over the snow and park, that is six hundred thousand, well, two hundred thousand dollars, six hundred thousand dollars is coming from, um, conservation trust fund dollars. And then about four million dollars for, I mean, the smartphone sixty. If we are reauthorized, um, we would still maintain, I kind of schedule it out, but we'd still maintain our current level of, of maintenance funding. We could also look at it differently if we wanted to schedule, um, and do some, um, overall maintenance funding out of this one. Um, so the new stats, we'll have to bring over some funds from twenty fifteen. Um, all in all, um, between both of those funds, we look at about one point seven million dollars of funds that help overall maintenance of our parks. Um, so we could look at it that way too, but in this scenario, I can just bet on us, our maintenance flat and out of two thousand and five. I would believe it's about one point nine million dollars before annually for new projects. Some gaps, um, one of the things that we just, um, presented to city council was our, um, parts assessment and future, our parts inventory and future needs assessment, which really kind of identified a few areas that, um, you could use some potentially new funding, uh, to replace, you know, playground equipment, irrigation systems, things like that. And through that, um, assessment, we kind of came up with an approximately seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars we need, um, in our park system. This doesn't include our open space trails, um, program, which, um, I've had our, um, our land manager, um, land, natural lands manager kind of take a look at what it would take annually to, um, run a full-blown, um, program in open space and natural lands. And we're looking at around four hundred thousand dollars a year for that, which we don't fully fund immediately. And then finally, our recreation facilities, um, we still need to get in and do some more assessments on that as well as our cemetery. Uh, but we do set some funds aside, about two hundred and ten thousand dollars a year to do, um, improvements to our various rec facilities, including this facility, the rec center, um, Chapman Hill, um, and Ringo Gymnastics, so. Um, that's really kind of. Uh, and again, this is kind of, kind of maintaining our current level of funding. Um, if you look at, we look at a various couple other options. Um, if we wanted to do things, um, then we need to strictly maintenance for our parks, open space and power system. We're looking at about two point five million dollars a year to, to pay for all maintenance of, of our current system.
So it looks like if the sales tax were reacted, and then a fifty percent of it going to parks, so, as we continue doing so, um, you have enough, um, extra, not extra, enough additional revenue um, to fund that, um, seven hundred and fifty thousand and four hundred and fifty thousand a year, because that's one point one million. And it looks like you have a fund balance, you know, starting in twenty twenty-six of one point nine million. So if I'm understanding correctly, it looks like you could add those additional maintenance costs in, that would still be covered by the sales tax.
And again, you don't have, um, really exact numbers.
I just, I, I know, but I'm using the numbers you gave us.
Yeah. And what it will cost to take care of our rec facilities and our open space program and things like that, this is really just looking at, um, parks. Overall, if we wanted to start including and doing maintenance in our open space and understanding that, we're going to have to get into the, some of that detail, um, which we hope to do this next year, um, but we're, we're kind of estimating all of it, probably about two point five.
So I, I, I understand that, but I also know that right now there's nine million dollars coming out of the general fund that also helps pay for some of those maintenance expenses. And so we're not looking at this in isolation. It's, it's included with twenty fifteen tax, two thousand five tax and the general fund rate.
Any questions?
I did have one question, um, for housing that I forgot to ask. Um, how, how long do you think, is it ten years to get, um, enough units to make an impact? Is it twenty years? If we were to, just, and, and I'm not recommending this, I'm not endorsing it, but if we added the sales tax, for example, how long would we have to, uh, extend that in order to achieve what you think would have meaningful impact on our workforce housing?
The, the table showed, you know, thirteen years to get to four hundred units.
Is that?
I, it's hard to say, like, well, that, then make all those affordable. Um, but that's, we're working off a goal and it's adopted.
So you're thinking thirteen years at this point, it's just your, yeah, okay, great, thank you.
What you would consider more aggressive for?
Well, yeah, that's more based on the number of units coming into, into the supply. So we can again, look at one of the range and, you know, as soon as eight years, you're seven million dollars a year, we can reach that same target.
Except that one of the challenges that we have in this area is absorption, which means the rate at which units get actually purchased and occupied. So I think you, by taking a more middle of the road, rather than being totally, you know, outrageously aggressive, I think you're doing a good job at that because not only do we have absorption issues, but we also have construction issues. And so we have to, we have to balance all of that. Yeah. Okay, cool. Thank you.
Hey, so we have, um, so this focuses on the two thousand and fifteen, so the parish multi-horror, the good project there. Uh, so I have, um, I can kind of share inside, and we want to fill in, um, that word. Uh, so we were projecting five point five million in twenty twenty-four. So we were projecting five point five million in twenty twenty four. Of the of the fifteen sales tax, so that's seventy seven million, seventy point thirty five. Or have the expenditures, six point three, mine turning board, which is unfolding into those grants or fund ounces. And then gaps, you'll see on the next slide, about a hundred million unfunded projects. And that is considering Drango Mason Park. So potential funding options, additional sales and use tax, realization of the O five. And you talked to Parks and Multimodal, and so I'll kind of jump to the the numbers there. Sarah and Troy were working on this. We did break it out for the. PC and apparently able to see what is one of those greater revenues that we're looking at through twenty twenty five. And then what's really parts of our maintenance expense for parks, new capital, parks, correct? Land acquisition and planning, and then what are those multimodal expenditures across the board? So. And you can see on here, it's not depicted up top there, but that's including all those future year projects or for the parks and everything.
Yeah, so. So yeah, through our CIP process, working with our various boards, we've outlined over the next thirty five. Through twenty thirty five, what projects we see happening in what years. And that's why some of the numbers kind of fluctuate. And then we we kind of base all that capital CIP discussion on our poster master plan. And there's a variety of projects in there. And when you get to the end of it, we're pretty much, if you want to take the whole poster master plan to the tally, we're about ninety five million. Ninety five million dollars short or under a million dollars short. And I will also state that that poster master plan does not have the Drango Mason Park full bill out in there as well. So that would be in addition to.
And this chart is based upon taking all of the two thousand and five rehab into the parks.
This just takes into account twenty fifteen.
Twenty fifteen, so taking, okay.
It does not include the.
And then for the multimodal side, we have plugged in actual project test in twenty twenty five. This is implementing, you know, this tax is implementing a full multimodal transportation plan. Which is, you know, limitless projects that don't have dollars associated with them. So we kind of just took the traffic.
Sarah, if you follow similarly to what the the postmaster plan does, which has the kitchen sink.
Right.
And hundreds of millions. What would the transportation be reestimated? What's the shortfall?
I mean, we're we're probably looking at something pretty similar. Because you know, it is the entire transportation network, all of the gaps and connectivity and large construction project.
And the reason I say that, I think it's important to know the gaps in your vision or your master plan. Because we have the gaps relatively in the Parks and Rec master plan. So we need to know the scale of yours.
Compare apples and apples.
And so it sounds like yours is more than what you've put on here, your gap, if I heard you, is.
Yeah, we did not include kitchen sink. We did kind of our estimated projects through twenty twenty five.
And so every year, there's a fund balance increase. Until we get into twenty thirty five, but in what year you spend a hundred and eleven million dollars in one year. So I I don't understand, you know, that doesn't make a whole lot of sense to me, but it looks like the fund balance is increasing every single year.
Keep in mind, this is just kind of projecting out through twenty thirty five, kind of working in for. Projects. Every year, we kind of look at that, we do a five year projection, so that this is just what's best for an extent of change, I would adjust. Better here.
And Sarah, I'm going to jump in. Does that, those numbers also include the ADA master plan? I believe it's twenty million?
No, that's in the.
Okay, thank you. Stay tuned. Glad to see it somewhere.
I think Councilor Baxter's point is a good one, though, in the looking at the hundred and eleven million. So if you look at twenty twenty four, that. Ten years out, basically, twelve years out, makes a little sense. Yeah, that's a little bit better, a little bit easier to get my head around eight million. Than the ninety five million.
Yeah.
So I think, man, it is a little confusing.
Yeah.
And there's an asterisk there, and I know I talked to Devin about it, because the hundred and eight actually encompasses. Years behind before, after that. So they've kind of just encapsulated, yeah, so that's kind of why.
That our master plan had, I think, three hundred and fifty million dollars of list items or three, it was a lot. And so I see where this is going to be from. But in order to get an idea of like a relative amount in comparison, like with the other funds that we were looking at. Or other priorities that we're looking at, that's helpful. Like the twenty thirty four is more helpful for me.
Yes.
So you went, Melissa, that three hundred some odd million.
Right.
Included things like a new rec center in Three Springs.
That's right.
And it is built out of Drango Mason Park. And I think future councils, since I'm including in April, but including you. Are going to have to discuss, are those the kind of things to bond for, just like you did the rec center originally? Rather than having that come out of an existing tax or or the general fund to pay for.
Right.
Because they may be substantial enough, and maybe if they're combined with another project, that might be the way to do that too.
Sure.
Okay, thanks.
You mentioned the the post and recreation master plan. And I think the exact amount is three hundred and thirty two million. To what degree, to what level have you incorporated that total wish wishlist not? And you know, this projection?
Yeah, I think you go back and probably compare our CIP planning document, spreadsheet, and take this out in twenty thirty five. With the poster master plan. So I don't think this number includes every four, because it does not include your annual basis. Probably this number, but the poster master plan does. So there's still some contracts that might have to be represented.
So it's it's a portion in the end of the three hundred and. When you, when you explain the the last charge and the hundred million, that puts fund balance below. Do I understand correct that from that wishlist of the three hundred and thirty two million, not much is part in the prior years? It's all accumulated in the last year or?
Absolutely. Basically, that unfunded, it's basically unfunded projects. If we, you know, extended it through twenty seventy six or something, then we could start. Laying out when some of those projects might occur, or there's all sorts of ways to slice it nicely. You can go out there and do. A bond or something like that too. And then you have a stable, okay, this is what our bond. Amount is going to be.
So how much, maybe I didn't see probably on the prior page, but how much capital projects accumulate would you have included in this projection excluding the last hundred million expenses?
That's what I said. I I need to go back and probably look at the poster master plan and all of those three hundred million dollars with the projects. And compare, because what we did is we just took out some of those things, you know, over the next twenty years. These are some of the other higher priority projects. I'll put that all to a spreadsheet.
Okay. Okay.
They can also. This is good.
Hey, great. So Sarah, I'll translate to Director. And we did have opportunity in the fall to do kind of a deep dive into the trends of funding and what our needs are. So I won't bore you on all the merits of public transit, except to remind you that, you know, we do meet those goals of affordability in the community. We address traffic congestion, we address aging complaints and sustainability goals. So with our current two point seven million dollar operating budget, we are operating seven days a week from eight AM to eight PM. And if you remember, we kind of looked at opportunity for transit service expansion. So that's what included under the forecasted expenditures in that first bullet point, seven million. That includes our current two point seven operating plus our expected two point two million, which would get us to our. Service expansion priorities, which are increased frequency. So instead of that, we wait thirty minutes or above. Everybody's performance then, you know, no less than twenty minutes, the community's priority. I'd like to see. An increased service area. So we're looking at specifically Hesperus, Crumosa, Edmond, Purgatory and the airport for those expansions. And then extended hours. So, you know, we know that there are definitely gaps in our service right now. That make it hard to rely on transit. So a certain worker who gets out at ten or eleven PM. Is unable to use transit because we've already lost a lot of it. So that forecasted expenditure, like I said, in our current fixed route service, our current air transit, ADA opportunity. And our. And our vision of service training, which I didn't get into the methodology of how we reached that two point two million dollar estimate. Is based on operating hours and mileage, kind of industry standards, and then supplement our our local form was. Our forecast revenue back up to bullet point one, you know, we're currently relying on a combination of federal grants, our local funding, which is Fairbox revenue, parking revenue. And the water tax portion. And then a small amount of contracts. What was, we have a contract with and current that trend law is funded. And then when given the comp that, you know, we got the, look here and talk about if money was no object, I got dollars from my eyes and I thought. Include the ADA transition plan for transit. We have identified twenty million dollars worth of projects that would bring all of our transit facilities and transit stuff, I think, in compliance with the ADA. So I have put in a ten year implementation plan, put two million dollars annually coming out of the fund. And then we maintain our fleet on a rolling stock replacement schedule, which fluctuates every year. And then also we have electrification goals to move all of our transit fleet to electrified fleet. We are currently in the process of developing a transition plan that will give us a. For refined estimate of what that cost is going to be for electrification. But I've plugged in kind of based on average annual replacement and the cost of electric fleet. What I expect over the course of, you know, ten years to be a reasonable annual ask for our fleet. So a total eight point nine million, and again, which change chain dollar signs.
Before you give me that tool, I would like to know if one thing is included in it. I think you were way on on lead, but at one of the meetings, I asked the question of. What does it cost to actually put in like benches and coverings at each of the sites and wait? Quickly send all council a number. I'm remembering two million dollars needed. That to put in at least some benches and ideally some covering. Is that included in in your wish?
It is. It's part of the implementation of the ADA transition.
Perfect, thank you.
Shelters, benches, bike racks, trash cans, those are all included.
Thank you, Sarah.
So yeah, we have a fairly large gap here between current revenue and expenditures. We have talked about some potential funding options in the past and brought some of the maps recommend to you. There are opportunities for some public private partnerships in accessing certain areas of the community. And then, you know, if you remember, there were lots of phenomenal fees that you might be able to use. And then one thing that we did not include on here was, since the comprehensive parking study was completed. There will be some adjustments to the parking revenues potentially. I don't have numbers associated with that right now, but that is a potential revenue source within expanded hours.
Could you repeat where the extended service area would be? You mentioned Purgatory, the airport.
Purgatory Airport, Hesperus, Crumosa.
Slow down, slow down. Hesperus, Crumosa.
Hesperus, Crumosa, Edmond, Airport, Purgatory.
Okay, I'm just wondering if. So if we remain within the city limits, that number of six point seven would obviously drop. But we would be able to provide a really good service. And I'm wondering if outside the city limits, if we need to have the conversations with the county, for example. Because that does benefit county residents significantly. And so I'm I'm thinking that that full six point seven. Might not, might be able to be, part of it might be able to be funded in a in a way outside of in addition to city resources.
Absolutely. And this is kind of just the, you know, big picture estimation of it. There would be kind of a menu of options that we could use. We don't have to do the fixed route service. You know, it may not make sense to operate every twenty nine hours at the Hesperus. But it may make sense to have an automatic service out at Hesperus. And it would just do a transit study plan to make sure that we're fulfilling the need of every area. With an appropriate service.
Great, thank you. And would you also consider? La Posta?
Yes.
And that, you didn't mention that would be in the city.
Yeah.
Be in the city.
Those were, those highlighted areas are just outside of the current sequence. And we would.
Right. Put you down that new route.
So Sarah's point, I'm seeing the reverse now, by the revenue, the operating expenditure. Capital, the fleet, capital expenditures were transit facilities and then what's all the fund balance?
I'll take ten minutes while you break.
Then I can announce, but you say, um, cut the buzz, man. So all of us were able to take, just this booker, were able to take a quick. Upgrade. Multi-capital, you missed it. We do need to get that done. It will save the city thirty thousand dollars. So if you could use part of your break to meet with Justin, you stay.
I have an appointment for stakeholder.
Oh, great. Okay, perfect.
Thank you.
To take care of it now for you.
Well, I've got two thirty, we can back in two forty. We'll pick up a little on top.
Thank you.
Yeah, we're also recording.
Same.
Okay. Well, okay, so, um, we have Alston as the other department for some of the storm waters, um, Monday evening. Um, and so, um, we talked a little bit about what, what those current revenues are, what the gas are. Um, coming that, I just wanted to share that appreciated about Alston being this, uh, the newer process. Yeah, that five-year, you spent your forecast methodology. We really put a lot of thought next to how much, um, is needed. What different categories are, um, more than the street side, but let Alston have a little more.
Sure. Uh, thanks, Allison Baker, from the Orange Director, and, um, my job opportunities, Doc, and I appreciate the, uh, spoken infrastructure as a proponent of what is a priority. Uh, stormwater has been handled, uh, historically through engineering and, um, not to give a lot of credit to Dougherty, the city engineer, and we've always together. We started with being engineers. Of course, we got us stuff with our spreadsheets and our presentations are therefore, um, less, less exacting than our spreadsheets. So I look forward to sharing the spreadsheet with you tomorrow when, um, we're down into the weeds, but I won't really dive into that today. The information that we put together here was sort of, um, the absolute best, best scenario that we come up with, which takes us out, uh, year over year, starting to do, um, stormwater master plan, CIP, which has had an initial discussion with council, but it hasn't followed up in terms of, of how we want to talk about funding or doing, um, creating, including, and adding compensation. But ideally, um, we'd be at 993,000, um, per year. Going for 24 through 20 age, you're spending 701,000 budget at this. Um, um, yeah. Or whatever. Probably different, but, um, the ideal scenario would more likely be, oh, my question, um, more, more likely be funded through stormwater utility or, um, through road impact fees, uh, consideration of how we're living today, or more grant work. Obviously, the general fund is not the ideal location currently where the money's coming from and like to move away from that.
And what's the current amount that's coming in?
Um.
17,000?
720, 23.
Very good. Okay.
And that was from the general fund.
Yeah.
Right, right. All of that basically goes with mine. We're likely to move away from that being the source of stormwater and the ones. So. We're good. Um. So, yep, this is our option A, the, the best possible world. Um, we do have some other areas that we can look at, um, more with you that would be a little less around them, but, um, currently in the five-year window, uh, to catch up in terms of stormwater facilities, uh, conveyance and detention. Looking at plus a million in years.
Something else, um, can they, with this weather that we're having right now.
Right.
How do you see, or what, or what have you or the crew seen the impacts been on our stormwater management? Certainly, you will, the drainage, this is the drainage. I think of anecdotal, what I've seen downtown, but.
Exactly. And I think that's a perfect example is, um, I can think of, um, within the downtown grid, innumerable corners where, um, you know, we get a couple of feet of snow and do the plowing, get it over the side and melt as Colorado snow does. And the fact that we have paved over year after year after year over storm drains that are now too low gives them nowhere to drain the melt off to. So they become, uh, basically ice creams overnight and they have to be dug out with, uh, a loader or some kind of, um, blower equipment to actually get the ice out because there's no way with wind drain with the pipes being, uh, such a doubt below roadway that it works over and over and over without upgrading storm systems at the same time.
And I'm sure with council, I mean, I was, you guys know I live downtown. There was some person in a wheelchair struggling. I mean, it was, it was piled up water to kind of trying to get through. And I, you know, I think, so I think we have to visualize what that looks like when it's not working. So, excuse me. No, no, you, oh, you can finish.
I was gonna say, and many of the street corners, you did that where our, uh, good citizens have come out in shovel, they cleared it out and then that night it melts. Drains right back down there and puddles with the, the storm pipe just cannot carry it anywhere because there's no work there.
So is this 946 this number or 993, whatever, when you decide to like roll it, it's fine. I don't worry, not worried about that.
Right.
Is that like slowly fixing everything that is, and keeping up and doing new? Is that like your best guess at like kind of keeping up maintenance and projecting forward?
Catch up moving forward, um, and, and then maintenance of the system over the years. And that's really what we're looking to implement. And, um, Jenny and Keith will come back to council with the final report on the phase three, um, stormwater master plan that includes the, the CIP breakdown and potential funding for renovations.
But you anticipate in 10 years, you'll be caught up with what's needed? Is that what I'm seeing here? So $9.46 million is?
What we have really looked at is a five-year window, um, and I would say we're at the 75% point of five years. So it's a reasonable assumption that we continue throughout that would be. But I have not checked your numbers out for 10 years to confirm, yes, we're in a good self-sustaining place at that point.
Well, well, I guess what I mean is have, have you caught up with everything that hasn't been done? Like have you fixed all those bad spots? At the end of 2023 or, or at 20, you said five years. So at the 2020.
2048, we're at 75 or 700 to catch up on it.
And is that based on what you think you can do?
Yes.
Or what you, or, and I'm going to ask, or would it make more sense to think about what you think is needed for the well-being of the community and then, and so I'm, I'm, I'm trying to get that balance between what you think you can accomplish. But also when I see people, you know, walking through up to their shins in water, you know.
And this will be a finally oriented toward CIP and non-forwardian house. So it really is oriented toward what the community needs to get caught up quickly. We could probably spend 20 years going through with our streets, through pipe by pipe, taking things out, upgrade. I, I don't think that's reasonable or effective for the city. So this really is based on attacking it pretty aggressively and using those funds, um, in a way that we couldn't do internally and bringing it outside forces that would be needed to, in answer to your question, to do what needs to be done, not just what our group can accomplish.
So Allison, I guess I asked my question incorrectly before. So by 2028, you think we will have gotten caught up. Why do we need money past 2028 in that, in that magnitude?
Ongoing process. And frankly, I
Okay.
So it could, um, potentially drop scale over there, the five years. I would assume getting caught up is going to cost more than keeping current. So I would assume it would drop off over those 29 through 33 years.
Well, I should hope so. If you're not replacing things that aren't working, you're creating nuisance.
Right, right, right.
So I, I personally, this isn't enough information for me as far as what it's going to cost to, to bring us up to snub and how, if it takes five years and then what the ongoing cost just the main payment would be.
And I think I, I can certainly get you the information fairly quickly on the, the catch-up cost, so to speak. That's, that's the phase three stormwater master plan. And that is, um, Rowan Tinsborough. That's that's the phase three stormwater master plan and that is um raw and test works and ready to go, so for for discussion now and further decision-making um.
And then what the maintenance costs, once you have that, once you have it caught up, then what the maintenance costs are.
And I could work on that because we do not have any stream to refer to.
Okay. And Alice, could I ask, have you also considered a future annexation? What costs might be associated with that?
Those, those are included, the structural construction or um conveyance and for detention is included in our engineering design review of additional development. And when that is done, it's absorbed by the by the developer, the additional maintenance cost comes to us at that point, so that should be included at the end of year by year as city addicts and
A village two and at three springs or a La Posta or the annexation of two fifty, two fifty-one, all of that could have additional maintenance that's not in the current.
Right. Each each does include additional stormwater maintenance.
And could you talk just briefly about potential spending options?
Um, we had looked at the possibility of considering the stormwater utility. This has been a really successful strategy in a lot of cities. And um basically it is setting up an enterprise fund and including some fees that are typically charged manually either with our current utility system or through a mill levy. Um so obviously, the the challenge in the stormwater utility is getting the message out effectively so that voters are interested in exploring something like that.
So that the utility would be a valid item?
It would be.
Okay.
It would be an ideal approach, but um it definitely requires some planning and a lot of um public meetings, getting uh specifics of the details that will be included, shared with the community in a way that is interesting and engaging and not just, oh, here are a bunch of boxes, um which which people are sort of like, I don't see it, I don't, we're, um maybe make the water go away, I'm not interested. Um road impact fees, we are looking at needing an additional, yeah, we do a study called uh trip um currently trip twenty 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 thirty, which estimates traffic and roadway needed needs for um uh to complete the next twenty years or so. We're about to do a trip twenty forty analysis um because just um locally, our road impact fees were really low um based on others that I've seen for areas such as Alex. Um, when we update that and look at that, there could be a potential for including some stormwater fees as part of that because obviously the expansion and development of the city impacts the roadways, which includes stormwater. So that would be a possibility to consider. Um and here's Grant one right now. Um thanks. We've got probably thirty different grants that um we're looking at as potential possibilities. I think they're just um well, I'm looking to opportunities, all of which we're not qualified to apply for, but the ones that we are, I'd like to get public works far more deeply engaged and we've recently hired Jill who's um really focusing on that and I think it's uh good process that's gonna lead to some good results in the next year.
Okay.
Questions? Okay, so um this is the one where I got to have a blast. Uh things that transitioned into public works basically a year ago, last November. Um so a year and a couple of months. And it had been sort of a third-year process of um funding analysis and planning for projects. So um as of eight P M left by my head, word of advice would, wait a minute, we need ten more minutes, I need to get one more hour and then way over the top of the spreadsheet and stuff, so very, very embarrassing, but um what what it comes up with and you uh hold it like a bit of the details, double things. Discussion tomorrow, but in um our current our current estimates for um.
This may be a huge help for our presentation.
This will be. Okay, and yeah, absolutely. The the five point five million is a a really good indication of what has typically been, I'm sorry, the revenue, five point five in twenty twenty-four.
The right is?
I thought we were warning it.
Uh twenty twenty-three, they.
Okay, okay. Um, apologies. So we're looking at revenues dropping significantly from eight point eight million to five point five.
That's the county money that's in there, right?
Right, three, three point three million for um the
So they're pretty consistent. We've just had one year of influx.
So right, the uh twenty nineteen sales tax has been fairly over, in the state of fairly consistently. Um.
Centering on the streets in New York.
Right. So when we go into this year, the the straight, the new and the region front, we have about two point five million, primarily because we're looking at a six point six million dollar uh construction for category two fifty and two two fifty-one, uh which is larger than our typical typical project. So after, we've got a few other uh reconstruction projects that fit into that um new or complete reconstruct category and when we go into pavement preservation, um nine hundred and forty-eight thousand, that is where we're doing uh milling that removes about two inches of pavement off the roadway and then we replace it with new new asphalt, or we put a seal coat on, we do crack sealing. This is what these roads from disintegrating in ten years and let some have thirty-one year lives. Um signals and controllers, uh we have not been dashing the money away that we need to upgrade. Uh we pay C dot for the the maintenance of signals and controllers, but we've purchased them. Currently, our controllers are very dated and not capable of the kind of programming that can be done remotely, that uh that's the requirement that you got hold with you when we go to do, say, intersection work with Mina Del Rio. They have a little bit of a uh leverage tool there to work, they haven't applied it. And I'd like to see us start um working on our intersections one by one and anticipating the a hundred and twelve thousand dollars. Oh, I'm sorry, yes, a hundred and twelve thousand dollars is about one intersection work of controller and signals. We also need to update the plan, I don't have the numbers yet, to start replacing the main street signal poles. So that's a piece of what would be ultimately included in that, but as of right now, they're not um they don't need code height, it's impossible for us to have the signal line up with the the lane locations or the multiple problems with the not use of those those balls ongoing. Alley is the drainage, uh drainage or paving. Currently, we've got two hundred thousand dollars for that, which if we get us um two two good alley projects. We have a couple where we have less than half an inch up drop from one end of the alley to the other. Those require significant uh drainage and drainage design and potential injection wells, things like that to get the water out of the the alleyways and those are going to be more expensive. If we really get serious about getting alleys paved and effective drainage, it would be a million dollars a year uh to to accomplish that. Sidewalks, um currently, we have three hundred thousand dollars, it's I've included um ADA ramps because we have federal requirements, the college of the federal money um to continue to upgrade our ramps, so that's included in there. Um, we have a little bit of money for sidewalk to support sidewalk owners in sidewalk replacement. We're looking at adjusting that program a little bit this year so that it's more equitable in terms of um lower value properties having more support from the city in replacing sidewalks and higher value businesses, taking more responsibility on their own without um what I'd like to see going forward and why it jumps up to seven hundred seventy-five thousand is sidewalk districts that initially are focused on uh the downtown area and one block at a time per year. Um start with waiting for sidewalk replacements because little bits and pieces are going to be so disruptive and um not cost-effective, I think particularly as we're working with the next step project um downtown, that it will be a great opportunity to coordinate those, you know, sidewalks up to um up to the standard, a little more of having accessible, uh work with the different ways to build links to whatever degree is possible, there are multiple options to keep there. Only um bridges, we do have nine bridges that the city of Grango is responsible for. We're not currently doing any maintenance or improvements on them. I'd I'd like to start a regular maintenance program and there are some items, such as cord rails, getting up standards, the in components of driveway, the cord rails need to meet certain standards so they're not an impalement risk. It's just ongoing bridge maintenance things that we have not um yet started on and I'd like to see us moving to that. A hundred thousand dollars would be a good start. We have a river that I could see somewhere in the five-year horizon, likely an alternative that we need to consider replacing, but we're not quite at that point, so I didn't budget it in there because obviously bridges are expensive. But um this would get us going. So as you can see, my um negative about twelve million dollars at five years is a huge number. And I don't anticipate that every single thing is going to get accomplished, that was new include Grango Mesa, um all the road work there includes the road work, it will come to and downtown next step, uh the construction um presented in the the city would wouldn't get into more than than that. We're on the other side of that, we'd love to see, but um it's a long way from five hundred million dollars a year, so I understand that a little bit of balancing has to be done and I'm looking forward to talking to some inform some kind of small.
So did you say the Grango Mesa and La Posta are included in this? Yes?
In that problem.
Okay, all right, yes.
And you also right now get funds from the street tax to cover maintenance. Uh was it four hundred thousand this year?
I'm sorry.
For the the two thousand and nineteen, we do an inter-fund transfer. I think it's about four hundred thousand.
This this year was four hundred thousand. When I did my ideal scenario, we did figure that would go to um maintenance because obviously not maintaining or not adding, so that does include four hundred thousand, four hundred and twenty-five thousand going to maintenance.
From the general fund.
Of the
Or from the street tax. From the street.
Right.
Okay, and then on the sidewalks, you know, two years, two and a half years ago, Melissa and I rode around in a wheelchair, which I encourage other counselors to do because it was really informative. And so on sidewalks, there are places where the sidewalks don't exist, so I heard you talk about, you know, and I really appreciate the basing it on the property value, you know, two, a two million dollar home doesn't need the same amount of help as somebody who's living in a forty thousand dollar home or fifty, whatever, what, you know.
Right.
Apartment. Yeah, uh or four hundred, what I should have said, whatever. You get the point. But what about what about working with those places and I think in particular primarily businesses that haven't put in a sidewalk to incentivize them to create a sidewalk?
And um yes, I agree, that's that's important. The sidewalk isn't bad, it's a bad sidewalk, obviously. Um, one of the things that I'm excited about this this year is we are doing an upgrade to our pavement condition assessment and in the five years of the last one, the company that does this kind of work has become far more sophisticated in their sidewalk assessment process. And basically does a wide door with a A T B driving down sidewalks and will give us uh much better prioritization of where and areas that do not have sidewalks are clearly not high on the priorities of us.
I I would just share with folks that when Melissa and I took this tour, it was just downtown. We worked out rural areas. We were where tourists and locals are walking and trying to be pedestrian friendly and we could not get around. We had to get out of our side, our wheelchairs to negotiate it. So I should have wanted to come out.
I can well believe that I'm here just walking from Main Street down to the Mina Del Rio can you know, foot traffic challenge in a wheelchair would be extraordinarily difficult.
Thank you for the thought you put into this.
I yeah, I think the presentation is good to see how they bring it up. This, I think, bridges is a very good program that you're starting at, that um on on multiple factors. The sidewalks, I'm not sure if you also consider assessments for homeowners when you do a larger Yes, a larger approach. Then the alleys, I think, is great because I know there's a couple of alleys that are problematic, but a lot of them are also just getting done, I guess, so I I I'd like to see and glad there's progress in in the books. And then the the streets, yeah, it's good. And pardon, is there a question?
So that's the conclusion of our staff presentation, six priorities. Scope, estimates, impact. Some of this is um a little bit of conjecture, right? Not all defined. You're at kind of a reflection point, I think, as community and you look through this. How you write some of that, well, that may be the key to return. It's not so much return on the investment, some of the social output, you know, government chasing ROI, makes sense at all. Some of these are just social goods, you're, this is creating communities, financial return on investment, especially something like sidewalks, streets, that you have obligation for. So questions, comments, thoughts before we do another round, I might ask somebody to pull off this question. Like, would, so you get another, another bite of the apple, see what ranks now, we have a chance to do the presentation. I want to give staff a round of applause. It's a lot because there is some level of, you know, their critical thinking, often do the best with their advice. And trying to share that, knowing it's going to be scrutinized, people want sometimes the exactness of this. Uh, it, it's not always that, as Allison said, you can tell you're looking at the payment, you can do the taxes right now, but it's just seven.
Roughly.
But um, and you can tell you the estimated cost of street maintenance repairs. And some of that is, is estimates and we know what the economy, the way it is, increasingly governments across the country are finding they're having a hard time in getting this on projects. Uh, but the supply chain things aside, the contractors have so much work in the queue, so you can expect the cost of doing much of what you're looking at today, which is kind of concrete-ish type things. Cost of doing it is, is continually increasing, not just because of time, but because of a, a lot of the factors outside of the control. So, yeah, probably before we do the round two of the, yes, Mary.
So um, in, in some cases, you know, you talked about possible bonding and other cases you talked about sales tax. Um, and so I'm just worried about, I have a question about tomorrow. So not everybody provided a, a potential funding source, some did and some did not. So how will we get a sense of making certain as we think about all of these, what the potential sources of funding might be for the for the program?
We have another presentation for you.
Tomorrow morning?
Uh, we're actually going to hand out the information today.
Okay, great.
Right, and look at Debbie, she shouldn't, yes, no?
Yeah.
Let's say that again.
I think you can either send it out or permit.
Uh, either one, whichever is fine, but we are gonna, it's the financial side of it that is to allow you to be able to take a look at it after this meeting and then be able to come in tomorrow and then have more discussion on.
For me, electronic would be fine. And I agree for now.
Yeah.
It's sort of the chicken or the egg, do you figure out which one based on the financing mechanisms or do you have a financing mechanism that figure out with you? And it's, it's a mix of that, inside, yeah, there is some things that have to be funded, so it's a bad there.
So I have a question probably say, um, now we, will some of that also, you know, I think we talked about the opportunity fund, but will some of those funding possibilities also include the general fund?
Uh.
Are they, are you focused primarily on external sources of funding our priority?
There's nothing really in the general fund, really, because that's something of the operating side of it, we'd have to like exist out of the general fund to get something. The opportunity fund, which is the general fund balance is part of it. The uh, sales taxes are part of it, the larger tax realizations part of it. Uh, and then there's also even a part of, we just wanted to do an additional tax or to see what additional quarter or half set is also part of it. But there's nothing in regards to a general fund, just regular.
I ask because the stormwater drainage has the 700,000 coming out of the general fund for 2023. So I guess I was trying to see if, if there was thinking that that could be funded through the general fund for future years.
My understanding is that we're trying to move away from that, that that was a intended as a one time.
So one off to get you started.
That was my understanding.
As you all know, in the general fund that, as I shared, much of that is consumed by operating.
Right.
These are sort of enhancements and capital that's the not more expensive, this is different, it's a different property in parallel.
I mentioned something and you guys suggested that I bring it up at the retreat, which is on this, it's really, really to your area is that as we think about parks and rep going forward, are we defining recreation only around, are primarily around physical activity rather than the re- recreation that can be obtained by being in the company of others and pursuing something?
Absolutely not, we, we look at recreation, you know, we provide spaces, we provide programs and events and activities, not just to provide that physical recreation, but also to bring people together so they have social um, you know, health benefits and, and spiritual benefits and all that kind of stuff, so it's not just physical recreation, providing all these things has a lot more than just that physical recreation.
And I raised that question in the context of two things, the senior citizens, the senior citizens that are senior center, let me call that. Um, which we tend to say, oh, that's the county, but we all are, live here and we all have seats, so, so that was one question. And make it certain, and then we also, I, I raised that same question in the context of the powerhouse, which also has like a lot of activities. Um, playing games together as a, as certain groups coming together for game night. So I was curious to make certain we're not limiting our funding that we might make available to different groups in their pursuit of recreation.
You know, I don't think we limit, I, I think it's a changing demographic, we talked about it in our customer service strategy uh this morning, that seniors are starting to behave differently and we get a lot of seniors here at the recreation center that don't want to go to the senior center off of my link to come. Um, so, yeah, we're, we're open to, we're here for, you know, six months old to 99 and we offer cemetery services.
So, that was good, I just, I want us to think about that, there's some partnership opportunities there, I guess. Our support could help them and, and they could provide something that, that we're not equipped to do.
And we, we started doing some of that through our CIP program this year, we are funding some work over at um the powerhouse. Uh, the, the soil project for community garden, so we're, we're partnering with people to, to make sure that we're, you know, in, looking at the community as well.
Great, thank you.
Okay. Any, sorry, any other questions before you do the second round? So again, it's the, the process is, you have four sheets, four question notes. I'm wanting to put in one per item. And it's uh prioritization and we'll see if there's any changes. Now we've had a chance to get a briefing on these items, okay, so. Round two of the prices right, or do you have anything? Let's make a deal on that.
I think that might be the most appropriate.
For some people. Well, according to my tally, round one for transit was three, it's now two. Is that correct? Storm rain and stormwater stayed the same. Parks and recreation stayed the same. Housing stayed the same at five. Facilities changed, stayed the same at five. And streets, bridges, alley improvements went from three to four. So there's only one variation, the one vote from transit to street, bridges and alley improvements, is that correct? Yep, that's kind of what I tell her.
I just want to clarify, for me, all of these are priorities, so for me, I, I, I have to put fill down. You, you define the rules, but I am really not committed to limiting myself for all these studios for, I can.
Well, I think that's the challenge, right, there's no lack of competition for priorities. You're trying to, as a council, make those decisions in the near term, which are the most pressing, and that's somewhat subjective. That's the nature of local government, um, it's not, it's not an exact science. So when you look at the top two of housing and facilities, those would be the, they stand out. There's some distinction uh between housing and that's kind of what we shared at the beginning, that, that's a new, new adventure for all of you to undertake, it's a little bit um less definitive and it's somewhat subject to market forces, I will tell you. I'm, I have to go forth to work in cities all around the country, this has risen to the top of their uh priority. And historically, cities are completely well experienced in dealing with housing. Poorball housing is the top priority in a lot of cities. And they're, they're just like, they're trying to figure out what's their role? Is it, is it that builders and incentives, financing, is it operating? Much like we just heard in the presentation, it really kind of covered a wide variety. Uh, facilities is one of those things, not always very sexy to the general public. You're an employer, you have facilities, operation, maintenance. You're, you're an enterprise that way, so try to be mindful of how do you reinvest in your own house for facility and so improvements, I'm sharing that just in general for the presentation. Street vision, a bridge of alley improvements, as Allison shared, not always very provocative. Um, I'll, I'll give you a, a five dinner for anybody who knows the species of foot in this. And Allison can answer this. Uh, and these pretty, pretty valid improvements, this is something that um, people want to know when their trees are going to be repaired. It's a possibility, the back hole mindset. Uh, continually trying to reinvest in their infrastructure is the backbone of your community. And, and there's no shortage for these here, so that would see four votes and then right, that was second, that's, I guess you will. And then you have these, the votes are here. Um, renovation, pro-mortgage. Now, this is starting to trend in cities around the country, what's their goal? Um, trying to provide, what you hear from employers, they can't find people and find them, they can't get here. So that transit is definitely merged, especially because of COVID. Out of the people around communities, especially from outland areas to bring them to work or what have you. A stormwater branch that Allison talked about, not very, hopefully people follow along, heard a description about why streets don't drain. It's the, it's the crowning of streets. So, just that, and as you see, we'll look around the community, um, it's not very provocative until you don't have and it's, uh, stormwater utilities, um, a lot of cities have those. And it's a tough sell because it's essentially you're creating a solution where people don't even have change with the banders. They just think that the water somehow naturally disappears until it's out front of their house. And then parks and recreation, I found in my time with, uh, studying kind of all the good things that is a policy life, opportunities, recreation, the outdoor coaches. Making man in this community, and I think it, and, and I know when I talk to some of you in preparation for today, that you're, that you're in somewhat of a crouched, figuring out what is the most profitable to the community, and that's why I'm here today. This is the lifestyle, it's a lifestyle of, it's impactful, it's immediate. Um, it's sort of enriches and it's visual, some of these other things are definitely behind the scenes, people don't really, it's not really sexy, it's a demo call. And I think you as policymakers are almost trying to reconcile the visible, visual kind of appealing, the amenities, if you will, with the backbone of the community. And, and you're constantly kind of pushing and pulling on those two different levels. I'm just offering that as an observation. So the homework tonight, in preparation for tomorrow, that is where we sent out the unique financing information. So tomorrow will be the different financing mechanisms that you have available to you to help uh move some of these uh further along where they need. And that will get into lots of details, again, we're trying to make sure that we're staying at a higher level, not getting into so much hours numbers calculated. But this is what the estimates are, these are the funding mechanisms. Some of that based on history, some of that based on extrapolation, because of time, some of these are timely. Um, and, and the level amount, the amount generated per year going into the future is based on, that is based on history. Uh, obviously based on. That's going to be your homework tonight, not sure when it will be sent out sometime later on today. She's finishing it up right now, adding the priority list of the new last ranking so that you'll have them. There'll be different options in there, we'll explain those when we come back tomorrow and uh see y'all in a while.
Thank you.
We'll start again at one o'clock, we're going to do lunch tomorrow. We'll see you tomorrow, one o'clock, make sure to stop with you. I even talked to Kyle, I don't think it was either. You know, started one to one. Okay, but there'll be snacks. Okay. Hey, enjoy your evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Devin, do you want this back or do you want us to turn it back?
Um.